Calling open session to order. We're start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America. To the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Next up, mission statement. Join in rehearsing our mission statement with me, learning today, leading tomorrow. We, sorry, we need a motion to call the meeting to order.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Ayes have it.
So I believe there's a change we want to make quickly to the agenda and have recognitions moved under the open forum. I think we've got someone commuting, so I'd make a motion to just flip the agenda to put the recognitions behind the open forum.
Second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, next up, public forum. Guidelines for the public forum are as follows. Each resident of the district requesting time to speak during the public forum will register his or her name, address, state, the issue to be discussed with the recording secretary prior to the meeting being called to order at six thirty. The board president will call the speakers to the floor. Each speaker shall give his or her name and address upon recognition by the president. Speakers will be allowed three minutes for their presentation unless extended by board president. If more time is required for presentation, the citizens should consider district policy replacement on the regular meetings agenda. Due to the possible number of speakers during the public forum, the board president may limit or extend the speaking time. If a number of speakers wish to speak on the same topic, the group shall select a spokesperson to present that information. A speaker may address the board only once during the public forum. Speakers may offer such objectives, concerns of the school operations as they deem appropriate. The board will not hear personnel complaints or school personnel nor against any person connected with the district in public session. Matters involving personnel shall be discussed by the board in executive session. An employee of the Wentzville School District may address the board by following the public forum guidelines regardless of whether the employee is a resident of the district. Okay, first up, we have Renee Hankey.
Is it on? Okay. Tonight is Dr. Kane's last public meeting. I can't say I'm gonna miss him. I'm sure he will talk about the new Raptor system during the superintendent report, and this is what I would like to know. How is the Raptor system used? Do delivery personnel sign in through the system to deliver goods to the schools? Several elementary schools held an art fair after school and parents didn't have to sign in through the Raptor. Why not then? On April fifth, twenty twenty-two, voters were allowed into Heritage Elementary and Liberty High, and they did not have to use the Raptor system. Why is that? Sign holders were allowed in to use the restrooms, did not, did not have to use the Raptor system. Why not? Did the Raptor system prevent student-on-student crime? Did the Raptor system prevent student-on-staff crime? Why doesn't Desi reflect what we all know is happening? For the tw- um, for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year, Timberland shows zero incidences, but six out-of-school suspensions. So you're suspending kids for no reason? How about Wentzville Middle School? Zero incidences and zero suspensions for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. Really? Really? Is that what you're going with? Okay. Dr. Kane has been in the school district since two thousand thirteen, and he has never found a way to get a designated SRO officer in each building. I would like to know why. Our students, or excuse me, our kids have come home broken, beaten, and raped over the past years, and Dr. Kane did not make it a priority to get more SRO officers in each school. We, the parents, want more SRO officers. Even though an apology can't take away the heartache and pain parents and students have suffered over the years, a huge apology is in order from Dr. Kane. Thanks.
Next up, Donald Looney.
Good evening. So spent a little time collecting some statements of appreciation to the administration and the current school board from parents and other community members. Gonna read a couple of those for you now. Please enjoy. As I waited for my daughter the last day at Piney Ridge Elementary, I saw a child, after leaving the school, teary-eyed, crying, and even sobbing. Never in my life have I seen so many kids disappointed for the summer. They were devastated to be leaving their teachers and their school. I heard mention of Mr. G and Ms. H, who were both leaving this year and deserve a big shout out for their huge impacts they have had on these kiddos. Another reason why we must find ways to hold on to our teachers. My daughter exited the building and sure enough, she was also sobbing. When I asked what was wrong, she said, "I just want to go back. I don't want to leave." She cried for nearly an hour, so shout out to Piney Ridge and the amazing teachers and staff we have and all they do for our kids. We are so lucky to have them. Next one. The lunch crew at Frontier Elementary and Liberty are just amazing to my kids. My kids have to have a special diet, and they are just accommodating and incredibly sweet to my kids. They take care of my kids. They take their needs seriously. I also can't say enough about the nurses at both of these schools. They, they are a part of this team too, and the relationships that they have built with my kids is priceless. These, these are life-threatening issues, and the staff goes above and beyond. I don't think they get enough credit or recognition, so I wanted to give them a shout out. I can't be here today to read this, but please know that our family appreciates you and all that you do. Thank you. Got time for one more. Uh, let's see here. My daughter, who has a rare disease, was again virtual this year. I can't say enough how amazing the teachers are at Liberty High School and throughout the Wentzville School District. Got plenty of these, plenty more. Just want you all to know that our community appreciates everything that you do. They appreciate all the work that our teachers put in, and I'm gonna keep coming up and offering these statements for you because we hear a lot about what's not being done. We hear a lot of negativity about all of you in the news and in the papers nationally, even internationally, right? Just want you to know you're doing a great job, and your community appreciates you. Thank you for your time.
Next up, Becky Jennings.
President Bryce, members of the board, Dr. Kane, good evening. My name is Becky Jennings. I'm a parent of two, two students in the district, and I'm also a teacher in our middle schools. I've taught in the Wentzville School District for seventeen years. I've taught at one of our elementary schools. I've taught at all three of our middle schools. Next year, I'll be at all four of our middle schools and at two of our high schools. I've taught in our legacy buildings, and I've taught in our newest buildings. I've also had the pr- the pleasure of experiencing this school district through the education of my own two children, both of whom will be moving up to middle school next year. Throughout our seven years in elementary, my children have had teachers, nurses, and staff members who've had a lasting impact on them as learners and as people. This year, my son had a science teacher who encouraged him and engaged him in amazing learning activities. My son also had a writing teacher who gave him confidence in his abilities as a writer. My daughter has also had educators who continue to impact her today. Her teachers have provided learning activities that have sparked new interests and have turned her focus towards her future. I would like to share a couple of stories from other parents about their experiences in the district as well. My family, uh, this is from a parent of a student at Lakeview Elementary. My family's experience at Lakeview, sorry, technology issues. My, my parents, uh, my family's experience at Lakeboat View Elementary, so sorry, um, will be complete as my fifth and sixth graders move on to middle school together next year. So tonight, I want to express my appreciation for, oh, I'm so sorry. Uh, sorry about that. I'll read another one. Um, thank you to the WMS staff for including our son as a web leader. For a student who is often in different settings due to his needs, you saw his leadership abilities and strengths. Seeing him, uh, in this leadership role is amazing. Um, I have seen with my own two eyes the dedication to our students that our teachers, administrators, secretaries, custodians, bus drivers, instructional aides, counselors, and administrative staff have demonstrated. Our staff goes above and beyond every single day, and every day I see staff impacting our students. And I'd like to thank you for the, for your support of those staff members.
Up next, Kylan Stout.
Hi, my name is Kylan. I just got out of third grade. From kindergarten to second grade, I was bullied by a sixth grader. I got kicked in the neck three times. I felt helpless. I thought he was going to kill me. I had, I don't feel safe at school because if a kid hits you, the teachers can't save you, and the bullies don't stop because they don't ever get in trouble for doing it. They hurt our minds. Please make school safer and better, a place for us kids. Thank you for listening.
Up next, Casey Stout.
Hi, my name is Casey. I'm here to talk about bullying happening in our schools. Our district is having issues on a weekly basis. I want to propose an idea to help prevent bullying and also a way that can bring money into our school district as well. It's just like if you were to get a DWI, you have to go into a victim impact class and SATOP class. So bullies would have to go to a victim impact class where they would listen to parents speak of how they lost their child due to bullying. SATOP class would be an evaluation that the child would have to take. They would need, depending on the level of severity of where they're at, it would depend on the class that they would have to take, whether anger management, therapy, counseling. The parents have to pay for each class and attend it with their child as well because who knows? Maybe the problem stems from home, or the parent is unaware of mental issues that the child has. This shouldn't be this hard to make a choice on what is morally right. This should be about coming together and fixing this, not just for my kids, not just for their kids or your kids, but all of our kids together because they are our future. Let me leave this, though, with you tonight because most of you up here have kids. Could you imagine tonight kissing your little kid on the face and then finding out tomorrow that they committed suicide due to bullying when nothing was done for them? You all have the power to make that change for them. So help us do that. Let's do that together versus fighting constantly all the time together. On another note, though, sorry, I'm nervous a little bit talking. I hate talking in front of people. Um, on another note, though, besides having something so severe as your child committing suicide, there's other things that happen as well, like drugs, things like that. So could you imagine later on driving your child to a rehab because they developed an addiction problem to mask the pain while you had the power to do something and you didn't? Or visit them in prison because they were the bully that mentally murdered another person's mind while you had power to do something and you didn't? Bullies, depression, suicide, and drugs don't discriminate, so don't think it can't be in your home next. While you have the power to make change, let's do this together. At the end of the day, no matter what job or what title you guys have up there, the most important title we have is parents. If you do care about our kids, our children, and to keep them safe, then this shouldn't be a fight, and I shouldn't have to beg for you guys to help us. We want action. We don't want any more talk, and we have to do this together. Thank you.
Up next, Suzanne Shumway.
Hi, I'm Reverend Susan Shumway. I have been a Wentzville district, in the Wentzville School District for about thirteen years now. I am a proud parent of a person who graduated last year from Timberland, and I have another son who is in Timberland now. Both of them have experienced a special education program, and I have learned to be a huge advocate for them over the years. Last year, I know that some of the procedures were changed for informing the teachers of the special ed program, and in October, when I reached out to the teachers, it, I got very nice professional responses back, except for one who was quite surprised to find out that they needed, they had an IEP, and they were required to give them different accommodations. Um, my understanding when I brought it up with the case manager was that procedures had changed. So my request to you all is we have a large special ed pro- program, and these are the kids who fall through the cracks a lot of times. Um, I have educated myself greatly to the point where I was almost received my autism specialist. I had done enough classes for that. Not every parent is able to take the time, has the time to go through and get that kind of education. So I am asking you to keep in mind your special ed students in the district as you make decisions, as you change protocols, as you change different things around. These are great kids, and they don't need to fall through the cracks. Thank you.
Up next, Jen Olson.
Regarding the most recent policy revision of Board Policy zero four one two, I would like to reiterate to this board that FERPA does not protect teachers, staff, administration, or board members from being named by a citizen during public forum. It protects personally identifiable information of children. In the most recent revision of this policy, it references Missouri State Statutes six one zero point zero two one, items three and thirteen. This section of state statute does not apply to citizens speaking during public forum. Item three speaks directly to personal information being discussed in an open forum by a government body. That's you guys, not us. In relation to the hiring, firing, disciplinary action, or promotion of employees. Item thirteen speaks directly to personnel records to include performance ratings or other records relating to employment applications. This section explicitly states that it does not apply to names, positions, salaries, and length of service. To be clear, section three and thirteen both apply specifically to public governmental bodies, meaning the seven members on the stage cannot sit in an open forum and discuss disciplinary actions of Mrs. Smith, the seventh grade science teacher at Wentzville Middle. That would need to happen in closed session. If I want to step up to the microphone and tell you that Mrs. Smith has been treating my child unfairly, then that's my right to do so. This board does not have the authority to restrict my speech based on opinion. That is unconstitutional. There is no board policy that you can write that will allow you to grant yourselves authority you do not have. Also, I ask the board to require revision to challenged material policy. The current process allows for the name of the person challenging the material to be made public, but not the name of the committee members. Any person who, who wishes to sit on a committee or board that will be making decisions or official recommendations to this board for our children needs to be identified to the public. This increases transparency, honesty, and integrity in our process. Decisions about our children should not be made with the comfort of anonymity. Democracy dies in darkness, and so does our trust in institutions and processes. I'm frequently asked by members of this board, "Why is this such a big deal to you? Why do you care so much?" My answer is simple, because every shred of our God-given freedom is important. Government bodies have been going rogue for quite some time now, slowly chipping away at our rights and attempting to redefine our role as citizens. I care so much because it's my duty and everyone else's duty as United States citizens to pass along a truly free country to the next generation, even if that means you have to get down in the dirt and claw it back with everything you have. We, the people, are at the top of the chain of command in this country. Let that not be forgotten. Fellow citizens, please do not be afraid to exercise your right and your voice in the efforts to restore true constitutional freedom and liberty to this country. It starts right here in small-town America. I also ask that President Bryce allow the additional speakers to address this board tonight. The signup sheet was out prior to five thirty, and when I signed up at five thirty, there were only three spots left. The additional speaker form has been given to you. Thank you.
Up next, Glenn Becker.
My presentation can be found at wsdrfour.com for any of you, and even anybody at home that like to follow along. I'm here tonight to talk about the e-Hall Pass system, also known as the bathroom monitoring system that you're installing at Holt next year. This school has gone too far. This system tracks kids everywhere, inside and outside of school via their cellphone. The school is sending personal identifiable information to this company that is allowing the teachers and the administration to profile kids based on race or gender to allow them to go to the restroom. It's also providing the administration patterns of the children's physical health, and it's contributing to the mental health data mining that's currently going on by third parties today. I've asked this board to put this on the agenda tonight, and you rejected it. I've asked this board to vote this application out of the school for next year, and I have received no response. Dr. Kane, on May nineteenth, you stated to the parents, "It's really important that our parents here, if there are questions you have, go to the faculty, go to the teachers, and they're willing to communicate with us." You also stated that if those questions aren't answered, that there is additional consideration that's needed, that you will follow the chain of command, and we will have working sessions in order to answer those questions. That was at the thirty-eight minute mark during that meeting. That was a lie. I've been trying to get this since this happened, and I have heard nothing from the chain of command above Dr. Skeeters, and none of my questions have been answered. So on, uh, May twenty-fifth, you had a meeting with the students, and you did not inform the parents. During this meeting, you introduced an e-Hall Pass system. You informed the, the students, and this is on slide twelve, by the way, that this application is available on their phone. You have screenshots of that application on their phones, and you also tell them the app is named Class Link. When I approached this to the school board, I was told there is no application. In that presentation, it states, if it was a restroom pass, you have to go to the bathroom and come back and let your teacher know so they can stop the time. Why wasn't the parents notified? I also provided you on Slides 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19, all of the contracts and screenshots showing that this application was tracking the precise location of the students, that you were providing the gender, ethnicity, race, a lot of private information to this company that's doing the password, the bathroom pass system. No comment back. The principal finally contacted me and said, it's not his problem, it's IT. They should have vetted the program. The principal sent an email to the parents and stated that there is no app. It doesn't exist. It's all web-based, even though I've provided you proof that there is an app. I pushed it yet again. Dr. Skeeters wrote me back and said, yes, there is an app for the phones. So which is it? Is the principal lying to me? Is it Dr. Skeeters? Surprisingly, Dr. Skeeters was telling me the truth. I already had the information. My closing note will be this. When a student goes to the bathroom, their laptop screen will go red if they're late. The student behind them will make fun of them if they come back late and they have to tell the teacher why they're late. Give you an example. Dan, if you're late, the student behind you might ask you if you were whacking it off in the bathroom. That's inappropriate, but that's enticing bullying. This application needs to be removed. It's inappropriate to track my students in the bathroom. Thank you.
Up next A...
Good evening. I wanted to thank you, everyone, for taking the time to show up today. And I also want to thank you, each and every one of you guys, for all the good work that you guys are doing. And I understand you cannot be everywhere at every time. It's a big district. But I wanted to bring something to the attention. I hear, that's my first time being at this meeting and I hear a lot of fellow citizens voice their complaint and their admiration for this administration. And I understand that in order to find a solution for a problem, you have to first admit that's a problem in order to find a solution. And if we keep hiding behind the Fifth Amendment, pleading the Fifth every time we ask a question for the administration and we can't get no answers, we cannot go anywhere and we're just gonna keep doing this back and forth. And that's unproductive and we're seeing this at the highest level of our government. And the opening remark over here at this meeting, you guys says, "Learning today and leading tomorrow." I'm wondering, what kind of leadership are you teaching our kids at school, Dr. Kane? What are you calling leadership when family members have problems? We are the citizens. We are the parents. Let's remind you guys that we pay your salary. And for a community to thrive, all of us have to thrive. It's just not some parents have their kids thriving and some parents their kids are not thriving. We have to have inclusion. All of us have to work together as the parents and the school. I'm not born here. I came from Togo, West Africa, and our school system there is different. And my wife here was, had her education, a bachelor's degree in education. And if I didn't have her on my side, I would not be able to begin to understand what was going on at school with my kids. Because the school system here is totally different and it's failing our kids. And just, I know I only got one more second left, wanted to point this out. We are living in a very fast, ever-fast and changing world. And these kids are gonna be the next generation, the next president, the next policymaker. What are we teaching them?
Please come to a conclusion.
I want Dr. Kane and the board, school board, to take action and make sure that the staff that we have in our school are trained properly. And we work as a community, you know, with the parents and the school. So we can, it took a community to raise a child and we gotta work together, not fight. Thank you.
Up next Paul Tripp.
My name is Paul Tripp. My daughter, Biaa Tripp, was humiliated and assaulted a couple days before school let out at Wentzville Middle School. I've had five kids go through the Wentzville Middle School. Three of them went through high school, went on for basketball, baseball scholarships, and other college. Two of them in elementary school. One daughter just started Wentzville Middle School this year. When she started, within a month, there's just been horrible horror stories about the torment that she's had to go through. While at this school, there's been horrible threatening emails, very vulgar. It's been reported to the school. They've done nothing. We've asked them to stop letting the kids email each other and only email the teachers. They said that's not possible, but other schools do this. My daughter had a whole cup of chocolate milk dumped on her head while a staff member watched. The person was able to walk away and come back thirty seconds later and hit her repeatedly, over and over again, in the back of the head while the staff member still stood right next to her. How can any human being stand there and watch a kid go through that? And then when I get to the school, they tell me that I don't need to pick her up, that she is okay. Well, when I took her to the doctor, the doctor said she wasn't okay. That she had bruising in her neck and she would have a headache for at least four days. I want to know why an employee or staff member would be allowed to watch something like this happen to a kid? Why the board knows things like this have been happening to these kids for years and won't even acknowledge it? We moved to Wentzville because of the school district. And I'm sorry I did that. Like what my kids go through because of this, this video went viral. My daughter's gonna deal with this for life. I went to have lunch with her the next day to make her feel safe because as I was driving by, I seen her on the backfield with a group of kids and I could tell they weren't being nice. There was no staff in sight. She was assaulted the day before this. She was only there because she had to do her finals. I want to know what you guys are gonna do to keep this from happening. How am I supposed to send her back to your school next year? She's scared to death because the staff member stood there and watched and telling the officer that was on the other side of the cafeteria ran over there and then the guy finally said, "Hey," and then the girl stopped hitting him, or hitting my daughter. All it took was a "hey." I really wish somebody would listen to the things that the community is saying. I know even the mayor has requested you guys take different actions and it's just refused and refused and refused. Please, stop letting this happen to our kids because they are the ones that are gonna lead this country. Thank you.
Up next Christina McCormick.
Hello, my name's Christina McCormick. I'm a parent in Wentzville District. Wentzville schools are trauma-informed and a trauma-informed school is not required by the state. The state funding or the state statute that provides, that states this statute for trauma-informed is because of an incentive. Trauma-informed schools use, uh, sorry, trauma-informed schools use restorative practices according to the International Institute of Restorative Practices. Restorative practices is a subset of restorative justice, which is a topic that is discussed in law school. Things like the privilege walk, safety spaces, little to no suspension, adding students to our school board for insight, using a racial lens in the curricula, social-emotional learning, they're all part of what makes a trauma-informed school. Restorative practices is a strategy that seeks to repair relationships that have been damaged, including those that are damaged through bullying. In a nutshell, the bully says sorry and the victim forgives. The Institute for National Restorative Practices states that restorative practices has its roots in restorative justice, a way of looking at criminal justice, to emphasize repairing the harm done to people and relationships rather than only punishing the offenders. The fundamental underlying hypothesis for restorative practices is that human beings are happier, more productive, and more likely to make positive changes to their behavior when those and positions of authority do things with them rather than to them or for them. Trauma-informed schools, according to Missouri Department of Education, states many students and educators are also experiencing trauma at a community level. Experiences such as poverty, community violence, racism, sexism, and homophobia. Many of these forms of community traumas are also rooted in historical traumas. Those traumas which may be started or have taken place far in the past and that continue, have, that continue to have far-reaching impacts on the present, these community, these community and historical traumas are rooted into systematic oppression, which has created an ongoing stress in communities through the disempowerment, disinvestment, and desincrimization they experience. The trauma-informed approach to better behavior shifts from the mindset of rewards and punishment towards the wards of accountability, which we hear all the time in our schools. Policies are in place for the integration of new curriculum to ensure continued connection to the trauma-informed process happens. We can get all the new curriculum we want, but we have a policy in place to make sure this still happens. Principles of trauma-informed care are embedded in the hiring practices, including the job positions and interview questions. I wonder if the new superintendent is pro-trauma-informed schools and if they did well in that interview process. I give more information on trauma-informed schools on Central County Parents Association Facebook page and just because all of you are bought and paid for by the Department of Education, the WNEA, and your political parties doesn't mean that our kids are. If you think that you can just throw us a few bones and run and then we'll just walk away, you have another thing coming and you just cannot understand that you are mistaken and none of us are going to just stop.
Up next Nicole Neely. Okay, up next Amber Crawford.
Our WSD admin said that they needed time and they needed parents to contact them about the CRT, Critical Race Theory, Culturally Responsive Training, and Politically Smear Attacks from the parents. But the truth is, we've been contacting the WSD admin since 2019, many, many, many times, only to be met with complete neglect, lies, double talk, rules for thee but not for me, hypocrisy, stonewall, obfuscation, and outrageous sunshine fees. The WSD admin for As Far As We Could Sunshine have recruited CRT Criminal, Critical Social Justice groomers from NCC JSTL, ECC, Educational Equity Consultants, who is also used by DESI, Missouri School Boards of Education, MSBA, and many Missouri School Districts to train teachers and administrators and create curricula. Core collaborative equity cohort include Ed was Crown Apple, Lloyd Webb, and Garrett King from Mizzou, among others, as early as 2010. The school districts also routinely spends tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands, and even millions on the wokeism indoctrination and gender theory and LGBTQIA queer theories. Sunshine requests through Missouri AG Schmitt's Student First Initiative has revealed that WSD spent $1.4 million last year alone on gender theory and the amount of money is still work in progress. We all know that DESI, MSBA, and NEA, and down to the school districts are all weaponized to be the Ministry of Truth to cause hate, division, slander, and false history, to brainwash our children to not think critically, but to criticize relentlessly, irregardless of the truth, facts, or history. They say, "Follow the money," and that is so true. We have unveiled the money with webs of strings attached when the entities as small as school districts to council cabinets, to council, county council, to big entities as big as DESI, NEA, and MSBA, via contracts and grants such as S3 and Title Funds. The systematic brainwash by our select Marxist activists, teachers, educators, wants our children to believe that biology of sex is fluid and that we require a biologist to tell what is a woman and what is a man and you can pick and choose your gender depends on your mood. That is simply not true. So I'm here to actually implore parents and educators to have the moral fortitude to stand up against the communism, liberalism, socialism, progressivism, national socialism, New World Order globalist, UN, and the Democratic Party.
Thank you. Your time is up.
There are forty goals of to destroy the United States since the Phoebean socialists in Frankfurt School. And our speech will continue.
Okay, up next recognitions, Dr. Kane. Bren, sorry.
Hello. We will begin this evening's recognition by recognizing some lifesaving efforts of several of our staff members. This spring Jill Noble performed the Heimlich maneuver on a student E-RAM at Heritage Primary and saved his life. Kudos to Jill.
You're literally a lifesaver, so we just want to thank you so very much for your efforts, your attentiveness, and your willingness to jump in. So I've already asked if you want to say something, since you do not, but we do want to thank you for your efforts. Thank you so very much.
Up next Mandy Perez, an instructional assistant at Barfield Early Childhood Center, saved student Elijah from choking on a piece of orange by performing the Heimlich maneuver as well.
Take your time. You have a little bit going on there.
Up next Erica Way, an instructional assistant at Piney Ridge Elementary, noticed a student Cameron choking and hit him on the back a few times to dislodge the food that he was choking on. Coincidentally, she had just completed her CPR training the week before the incident. Congratulations and thank you.
Mandy, is there anything you'd like to say? So no one wants to step in the batter's box in terms of saying anything, but literally this maneuver literally has saved lives and so we are so appreciative. The constant well-being in terms of what you're doing, in terms of looking out for our kids in all spaces clearly makes a difference, in this case saved lives. So we are so very thankful. Again, the training, the maneuver literally worked, so we're so thankful for your efforts. Thank you so very much. Thank you. Thank you so very much. Thank you.
Up next, three WSD students will represent the Lewis and Clark Career Center at the Skills USA Annual National Leadership and Skills Conference this June. These students earn first place at the State Leadership Conference. With us this evening is Cole Wolf from Liberty High School, who qualified and will participate in the national competition. Alex Davis from Timberland and Kayden Moore from Holt High School also qualified for the national competition. Congratulations.
I appreciate the award. One thing I would like to say is I'd appreciate if some of the teachers could really just appreciate the trades more, because I mean, we're the ones that are out there doing the work. We're fixing your air conditioner on a hot day at 9:00 PM, and some people really just don't appreciate that. And everyone, stay cool.
Well, Cole, we appreciate you and wish you all the best with the competition and all the best in your future. Congratulations. Thank you.
Up next, consent agenda. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Ayes have it. Up next, superintendent reports. Dr. Kane.
Yes, up first will be a presentation on security that speaks to district security. So clearly a lot that's going on across the country as relates to some security items. So there's a lot that has been going on in this district for some time to help meet the threats that we are seeing. And it's important to note that this is an ongoing situation as relates to threat. And so you're going to see some layers to some things that we are doing in the district. But please know, the answer today on June 16th of 2022 is one that is constantly going to evolve because we believe that is in fact what is needed in order to keep all of our students and our staff and our patrons safe as well. And so there's a tremendous amount of communication that occurs between staff in the Wentzville School District and law enforcement. And to be frank with this community, it doesn't just occur from nine to five Monday through Friday. It occurs in a lot of different spaces in order to keep things up and going and making sure that all parties are aware of what's going on. So with that, Mr. Schultz, if you could lead through this presentation, I'm sure there may be a couple of comments or questions that we'll address at the end here.
Absolutely, and I would welcome any questions the board has as I go through the information. This is a lot of the same information that was presented earlier in the year with some updates, but as natural conversation, it may serve us better to have the dialogue as I go through. So feel free to ask questions as I go through the presentation. We wanted to start by providing you with just an update as to the different security upgrades that the district has implemented over the past couple of years. A lot of these upgrades have been accomplished through different props that have been passed and then also using some of the capital funds through the district as well. Obviously, we've had the AI phones and cameras, the check-ins in place at all of our buildings. Those are the buttons that visitors press to gain entrance to the building where we check to make sure that they have a reason to be there. In a lot of these cases, our building staff know our parents and know the visitors that would be visiting on a routine basis. So sometimes they do just allow them to be buzzed in when they recognize them. But a lot of these upgrades and these processes that we talk about are also items that Dr. Mueller and I have discussed and have planned on revisiting over summer to see what improvements we can make and then what areas we can provide retraining with all of our staff as we come back in August. We've also participated in security camera upgrades, not just additional security cameras, but then also making sure that the software packages are current and we are able to keep both the interior and exterior of our buildings safe and secure. And those cameras, the police departments do have access to those as well. So if we have events going on, they can log on there. We have phone system upgrades that have allowed us to have one comprehensive phone system throughout the district so that any student or staff, they have the ability to pick up those phones and notify either 911 or the main office of any safety concerns if that need arises. And we have systematic processes in place that are posted in the classrooms and by the phones that make sure that everyone knows how to use those. We have ID badges that we issue each year to our staff, and all of those ID badges are on a rotation cycle so that each year we have a new ID badge that is issued. And that allows us to not just look at a name and determine whether or not a staff member or a person has a reason to be on our ground, but also that they have the correct badge on based on the color for that year so that any staff member that sees a visitor walking down the hallway or an adult that they do not recognize, they've been trained to ask them, you know, what the reason for their visit is and how they can assist them. And if there's any issue there, they should be directing them to the office so that we can make sure that they're properly checked in. We have crisis plans that we update each year at the building level, and we are going through a comprehensive review of those plans this summer to make sure that they have all of the updated information in those plans for the new buildings, for the buildings where we are modifying spaces and where we have classroom additions that will come online next year with middle school. So those will be updated. And we routinely work with local law enforcement to make sure that those plans are current and they know exactly what is located in each of those plans. We do have the vestibules that were added years ago through one of the bond issues, and we've continued to add those safe spaces to all of the new construction so that when we do give access to visitors into the building, they are not allowed immediate access into the building. Those vestibules kind of herd them in through the office where we can check them in and make sure that they have a reason for being there. During the 21-22 school year, which we just completed, we did implement a new visitor management system, that's the Raptor system. And we made sure that we had trained all of the staff, all the office staff, on that process before we rolled that out, we rolled that out district-wide. And the implementation of that has been rather smooth. We do not have all of the bugs worked out with that, but for the first year, I would say that all of the building staff, they're comfortable utilizing the system and we have positive reports of that. We have had situations where we've had visitors enter the building and they should not have been in our building. The Raptor system identified those individuals and they were asked to leave. None of those individuals were employees. As it turns out, they were vendors that were either working onsite or delivering. And so we were able to catch them as we do require them to come in and swipe through that system there. We had a security team that was working at the district level throughout this year and last year. For the upcoming school year, 22-23, we are planning on this summer installing exterior door management systems which will allow us to track who is going in and out of our buildings. And those doors will be locked with using a FOB system where the software will tell us exactly where and what staff are going in and out, what doors may be left propped open, and so we can better get a handle on all of the access points to the exterior of our building. And then the following year, 23-24, we are going to implement that same door management system for the interior doors. Not all of the doors will have the system, but we will have select doors in different office areas and different areas within the building where the security team and the building staff feel it would be important to be able to determine who has access to those locations. Other security measures that...
Hey, John, can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Just try to make this interactive.
Please.
On the tiering or the timeline that you got, I think, Rick, that was like Prop C in US that we used, some of that funding for and had planned. There was a security team that kind of laid out a plan over time. And I think this is, correct me if I'm wrong, John, is like the execution of that plan. Is it fair to say, though, there's some flexibility to Dr. Kane's point that threats and needs shift with time to relook at that and where that best dollar is spent on some of those things? As I understand it, there's flexibility, but maybe kind of speak to how we think about that over the next two years?
Absolutely. We are very fortunate because of our bidding process and because of the price of construction. So many of our projects came in under budget. And so that has allowed us to have the additional funding within those props. So that is what has allowed us to explore these options and implement those. And some of the security features that we implemented five, 10 years ago are now outdated. They obviously don't hurt, but with the current research and the current threats that we are seeing in communities and in schools, there is absolutely a need to revisit what protocols we have in place and then what additional resources the district can implement in order to make sure that we continue to have a secure building. So that will be part of that security team, I'm sure. We also have building-level teams and other district-level administration and staff that get together through the active shooter training and those facilitators to make sure that we're taking all of that into account. A lot of the recommendations that we have implemented have been based on all of that committee work. Other items that we have, we have multiple means and avenues for students, patrons, staff members to communicate with us if there are issues that they notice, whether it's doors being propped open or student behavior or staff behavior or parent behavior that they think needs to be reported because it's just questionable. We have the Blackboard Alert System, the WSD app. We have the online tip line on the app, Courage to Report. All of those are avenues in which people may provide us with information so we are able to investigate. We obviously encourage folks to email, to make phone calls, provide us with as much information as we can. We have a tremendous working relationship with all of our local law enforcement agencies. And to be quite honest, we are on the phone with them on a regular basis at all times of the evening and morning because when those tips come in or when law enforcement is notified of an issue, whether it's 10 o'clock at night or 5 o'clock in the morning, we are on the phone or on the doorstep of those students' homes, making sure that everyone is safe and making sure that we are proactive and not allowing anything to happen at school. The first part of that is we have to be aware of the situation. So that's where all of those tip lines and all of those different avenues for communication are so valuable. We also have a one-touch radio system, and that is a top view of that radio. So that's actually one of the typical black walkie-talkies that you would see staff wearing in a building. We took this view because that red button in the middle of that radio is a direct link to dispatch with our local law enforcement agencies. So regardless of what's going on and regardless of how many phone calls dispatch may be receiving, if we pick up one of those radios and we touch that red button, it bypasses all of those calls and goes straight to law enforcement, so we have immediate contact with them. That's something that we've had in place the last couple of years, and I believe countywide, they have worked to implement that. And it's a great system. We have to calibrate those and test those on an annual basis. And Dr. Mueller has coordinated all of that and works with the county to make sure that we are up and running. So we do have everything set for next year with the new school, and that continues to be a great resource for us there. I did speak to the partnerships that we have. Those are ongoing. We have, like I've said, we've been very fortunate to have such strong relationships with them where we can just have open and honest conversations and make sure that they're getting what they need and we're getting what we need to make sure that we have everyone in a safe situation at school. We have school resource officers that are in our buildings. We have DARE officers or START officers as most of the schools are transitioning to the START program. And away from the DARE officer and the DARE program, the tornado safe rooms are obviously a mandatory part of any new construction build or the additional construction at any school. And then we have the individual department trainings that our different departments and schools participate in as well in order to make sure that all of our employees and students are safe there.
Excuse me, Mr. Schultz?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question.
Sure.
Can, I know you talked about the relationship of law enforcement. Can you just talk a little bit more about how all the different agencies communicate together and how they all understand the expectations should there be an emergency at one of our schools or facilities?
Absolutely, I'd be happy to. All of our local law enforcement agencies, whether it's Lake St. Louis, O'Fallon, Wentzville, the Sheriff's Department for Unincorporated, St. Charles County, even St. Charles County or St. Charles, St. Peters, all of those law enforcement agencies work together to make sure that if there is an emergency situation, they have their plan in place. So regardless of who's onsite first, they have been training and they do continue to train together to know how to appropriately respond to any emergency situation onsite. So if we did have a significant situation at a school and someone called 911 and someone responded, the first person that would be onsite would be the person that would make the initial contact and start the process. And then as the different agencies, because really depending on the scope of the situation, whoever's the closest is going to respond until they have it under control, and then they may back off and turn it over to the local agency. They do have a system in place where they would prefer that the local law enforcement agency would take the command, but it is all hands on deck until they have the situation under control. At the same time, they work collaboratively with us through all of our trainings, whether it's the active shooter training or other crisis plan training, to make sure that they know exactly what our protocols are and that they help support us. They give us feedback and they also ask for our feedback and they make sure that we understand what their approach is so that we can share that with our staff. So our staff need to know exactly what their response is going to be, and they want to know what our response will be as a district. The planning that we have in place is systematic and it is specific to the district. And it is something that every school is trained the same way. There are some nuances depending on the building, whether you have two stories or one story. If you're a prototype building, if you're a legacy building, there's just nuances there. But as far as all of the formal language and all of the process, all of that is the same. And we have taken that approach because we want to make sure that all of our staff who may travel as a traveling teacher, maintenance, custodial, substitutes who may be in different buildings, regardless of what building they go into, we want to make sure they understand exactly what the district protocols are. So we do work very closely with every local law enforcement agency and we invite them into all of our trainings. And they want to, they often reach out to us, asking us when our trainings are so they can participate, so they have that firsthand knowledge as well. Something new that we started a couple of years ago, we have implemented a staff's safety day which takes place before the students' first day of school. And for us and our staff, this was important because we wanted to make sure that all of our certificated staff who will be in charge of kids that first day of school had the opportunity to go through our intruder training as a refresher or for the first time to make sure that they had that prior to day one. So we hold that the couple of days before students come back. And then after they participate in the intruder training, they also have time to go through some of the other mandatory trainings that they need to complete before students come. Any questions on the safety day? Okay. The staff intruder training, we partner with Tier One Tactical, and we currently have 49 staff trainers trained through Tier One Tactical. Tier One Tactical is an organization that is comprised of St. Louis and St. Charles County law enforcement. Tier One Tactical is an organization that is comprised of St. Louis and St. Charles County law enforcement agents who recognized that there needed to be a system in place that would teach staff and teach students and then ultimately teach parents what options are available during the event that we would have an intruder in our building. This July 21, we will have an additional 30 trainers that will either be recertified or will be certified for the first time. And that's just due to staff moving in and out of the district. But we do, or after that training, we will have enough staff trained to then go into all of our buildings and train our certificated staff. And we also have department leaders who are trained so that they can train all of their hourly staff as well. So the goal is to provide this training twice a year, which we run scenario-based training with them as well so they can kind of get a feel for what some of these may look like. In the picture here, you can see the individuals in the yellow vest are some of the facilitators and then also one of our Wentzville SROs who helped us with the training there. That's Officer Hyde. Part of that Tier One training, the four E's training, is a communication piece with parents. And we've started to push out communication through newsletters, whether it's district or building. We've been utilizing this program for several years and we are to the point where we've started to include students in the training. Not that we have students participating in active shooter type training, but we do go through scenarios with them and the teachers talk through with them what options they may have available and the importance to listening to the intercom, following direction and then being aware of their environment. So all of that goes through the teacher and the school. And then we do also send information out district-wide when we get to a point where we're going to make changes at the district level. Any questions about that? Okay. And then just some general information regarding other drills. This is just a list of the types of drills and the number we do each year. You can see the fire, earthquake, tornado, intruder with students and then with staff only. So you can see the number there. Our focus here is to make even our intruder drills as routine as our fire drills. When we think of a fire drill, I think we can all remember back when we were in school and when the alarm would go off, we can all remember lining up at the door, waiting for the teacher, walking out single file. We probably knew where we were going to go in the parking lot and then we were going to take call, hold up the green if everyone's there and then we go back in, right? We all remember that. What we would like to see happen with our intruder drills is that same mentality. So we built up that muscle memory in our students and in our staff so that if there ever is an incident where they would need to utilize this type of skill, they wouldn't have to think about it. They would just be able to react and use the options that they've been taught. Some other annual staff trainings, we have mandated reporter harassment, whether it's student to staff, staff to student, discrimination, Title IX bullying, de-escalation, healthy boundaries, confidentiality. And then through Student Services, we have the health, bloodborne pathogens, EpiPen, IEP 504, seclusion restraint, student allergy prevention and/or response. And then also through HR and other departments, the equal opportunity, firearms, employment, hiring practices, abuse, RUP, staff conduct. These are annual trainings for all of our staff that they participate in each year. And then we broke it down by some of our departments because we did want to recognize that on top of all of those trainings, we do have specialized training for transportation, child nutrition and maintenance and custodial in order to make sure that they're utilizing materials appropriately and making sure that both students and staff are safe there. I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
I have a question. So we mentioned bullying, you mentioned bullying on the slideshow. I'm just curious, is there a particular curriculum program that teachers go through professional development? Just, and how do we gauge or measure the effectiveness of that program? And when do we maybe decide to adopt something else or use a different program or just, you know? Truly out of curiosity.
Sure, sure. So first of all, there's state statute and district policy that outlines how we handle bullying. So now all of that is reactionary because once someone has reported an instance of bullying, then at that point, we're just reacting to the behavior and then we're following policy, making sure that once we're notified, we've started the investigation, we've completed the investigation and then notified folks. In the past, we have addressed it through programs like PBIS, which we had district-wide in our buildings. We did that for a number of years. Now we have house systems and we have student-led systems at the middle schools and high schools where they try to address it either through their student groups. The PBIS was the last district-wide initiative that we had in place that worked directly towards calibrating student behavior and staff reaction to that behavior. A lot of what they are doing at the buildings now is trying to be proactive and trying to help students understand the difference between reporting and the difference between tattling, whether it's the elementary level and middle school. And then we do, anytime there's a bullying investigation, that's documented through the school. So we have the information related to that, whether it's unsubstantiated or substantiated. What we see a lot of, a lot of times, when you look at the definition of bullying, a lot of times what we see is that we absolutely have inappropriate behavior. Students have participated in behavior that we would not deem appropriate and we would say it would violate our student code of conduct. But it also, at the same time, doesn't meet the definition of bullying. And so we are able to address the behavior sometimes through other descriptors within our misconduct policy, even though it doesn't meet that definition of bullying. And so, you know, a lot of what we work with our administrators on is being able to help students and help parents understand those distinctions between what would meet that definition and what would not. And not discounting the fact that we need to address the behavior, but just making sure that we're clear on what bullying is versus what harassment is versus what disruptive behavior is. And so that's where a lot of that education goes in so that we can both support the students and support the staff members, support the family and work together to make sure that it comes to an end. Because at the end, that's really the goal, regardless of what's going on. We want to make sure that it doesn't continue.
So I have maybe a comment or comments, I should say. I think that, you know, John, the presentation around, and I think this has evolved, this request for this agenda item. When we first started talking about it, it was related to all of the external factors with what happened in Texas and the community members across the board wanting to understand what the district is doing. And as I heard from law enforcement before, those questions are everywhere, whether it's coming to them, whether it's coming to local, you know, governments in all districts in the county and across the state. And so this presentation, I think, to me, John, is really helpful in terms of all the things that we do do and even embedded within that, which is where my question was, is improvements along the way? And that constant need to get ahead of and be better. So I appreciate that, you know, in this presentation and the work that we do do. I think what we've heard in comments here, what we've seen in videos, what my kids have experienced at Wentzville Middle, I think that's where they're tying, you know, the community is tying also safety from an external way to safety inside the school, whether it's between fights or bullying and issues and those things. And I want to just make comments and I want to encourage my fellow board members because there's not material here that talks about it. But we have spent a lot of time as a group in these workshops, in the transition with our new superintendent and with Curtis, talking about this concern. I think I can speak for all of you that we do not like what we see and we are concerned. We want our students to be safe. I think you'll hear as a community through the summer and some of our agenda and planned items, the work that was done and what we want to do and see an improvement. We have four goals as a district and this board has given that direction around improving communications, academic achievements, safety and as well the culture and climate here in Wentzville. Those are our goals. And I am confident in the work that this group is committed to do. We aren't perfect, we will admit that, I'll admit that to anybody that talks to. But we care about this issue, about safety within our schools. It is not an easy solution in my eyes. I think that's why it will take time, it will take multiple presentations, it will take work as a collective group. I love the ideas of partnering with this community on this issues. I'm encouraged by, you know, comments from elected officials here in Wentzville that seemingly want to fix the parity on expenses related to SROs, for example. And so I think that I would encourage other members here to speak just kind of your general thoughts because it is a concern. I mean, I'm a dad, I've got girls, you touch my girls, it's all, like, I get it. And so I think it's just talking about this work because we have spent a lot of time and it's not just this board. I know this team, this administration has done it, staff have done it and there's no easy solution. But I think that we've given those goals and we've given those directions and I'm encouraged by what we'll see in terms of metrics and communication of success along those ways. So I'll ask for comments from my peers there because it's not, there's nothing here that's going to say, is there a fix of a policy for bullying that's going to solve this? But I think talking about it, communicating what we are doing, acknowledging our faults and recognizing where we can be better is the step forward.
I'll just echo what you said, Vice President Goodson. And I think it is, the biggest issue is a very complex issue, right? And I don't think, I don't feel like we can look at the school district to fix it, right? We, as a collective, community, community members, stakeholders, parents, board members, administration, all have to work together. You know, how can we get in more involved? Bring families, bring parents, bring, you know, everyone to participate and make a commitment to really improving it.
Yeah, and I would absolutely agree with that. You know, I think the first item that needs to be addressed is the fact that, you know, no one wants their child to go to school and feel uncomfortable. We all want our kids and us as administrators and as public educators want all of our students to be able to come to school and just focus on the reason why they're at school, which quite honestly, right now, is academics and social belonging, right? They want to fit in with their peers and they want to succeed academically. So we have to acknowledge that and that's what everyone wants. So when a student comes to school and they don't have the ability to just focus on those items, that's a concern and it should be a concern for all of us. You know, also, one of the items that we've recognized and that we know needs to be addressed, not just with the school district, but with community members, with parents, is that out of, I don't have any data to support this, but I would say that probably for every two occurrences that we hear about and we investigate at school, we are made aware of the same situations that are happening at local parks, happening on social media, at home, in the evening or on the weekends. And parents are reaching out to us to try to inform us of what's going on and try, trying to get us to be able to address some of those situations because they don't know where to go other than to call us. And they're looking for help, they're looking for resources. And we can't always address issues that take place outside of school. We can absolutely monitor that at school and make sure that if something comes up at school, that student has a safe outlet or we are aware. But really, for every two that we investigate at school, we have another one that's reported to us that's taken place outside of school. And my point with that is, it is a concern in every school, whether it's public or private. That is where we are at. But it's also a concern in our neighborhoods and in our communities. So it is going to take that collective workforce or task force to try to figure out systems that will alleviate some of it, make it better over time. And I think that moving forward and working with Dr. Mueller and talking through this, I know that this district is committed to it and is going to continue to look at ways to improve it. And I'm glad to hear that you all are supportive as well because it, you know, the biggest thing that takes away from our kids' ability to be able to focus on the academics is not feeling safe and not feeling secure on their seat.
I just wanted to add real quick and Vice President Goodson and Director Bates, I mean, and this is somewhat repetitive, but I think everyone up here wants to give reassurance to parents that, again, we're committed, we're committed to the internal safety, the safety of our schools internally, externally and law enforcement relationships, relationship with parents. And that's going to require a lot of communication. This is not going to be one conversation. This is going to be a series of conversations that we're going to have. But we are seeking, as Director Bates said, we're seeking participation from you all. And I'm confident, you know, moving forward that we have a plan, it will evolve. But we all have to work on it together because we're going to have to find these answers together and we're only going to do that if we all participate.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, hearing no other questions. Dr. Kane, if you would like to, transportation presentation?
Actually, Mr., I'll hand this back over to Mr. Schulte in terms of the Transportation Department. It's a presentation on things as it relates to transportation, so. Our Director Kim Boyks will actually be leading this talk as well.
All right, good evening. I want to thank everybody in the board for the opportunity to present tonight. So this is our evaluation, our program evaluation for our Transportation Department. So our first slide is showing the years from 2012 through the current year of 2022, the average daily number of students that we transported. Currently, we ended this year with an average of transporting 9,731 students. These numbers are collected on a biannual. We collect ridership reports in October and again in February. This is the comparison that we've had. We had data that we went back from 2014. So of October 21, we transported average of 9,525 students and we ended in February transporting 9,936 students. Our next slide is a breakdown of our activity and field trips. This year was a very busy year for us. We added our new high school, North Point, and a lot of their sports and activities. We ended the year with a total amount of trips of 2,114. That is quite a lot of trips for us to cover in addition to our daily routes. You will also see that we had a, quite a few of our trips that departed before 3:30 PM. We had almost 1,000 of those trips that departed. Those trips are basically trips that our regular route drivers cannot currently drive. So we have to rely heavily on our sub-drivers to take those trips for us and make sure that the sports are completed. Our next slide shows you how we are actually doing within our department. We have a total currently as of June the 6th, a total of 126 full-time drivers. We have 66 bus aides. We have a total of 12 office staff and that breaks down to myself as director. We have two operation managers, we have two administrative secretaries. We have five routers and dispatchers, two driver trainers. We have one fleet supervisor, seven mechanics and one fueler. So that brings our total to our complete transportation staff of 214 employees. This is just a breakdown of our fleet. We have a bus fleet of 179 buses. Um, you'll see over the years back, dating back to 2012, we have added new buses over the years. Last year, we did not purchase any new buses. The last time we purchased buses, 23 Internationals was back in 21. This is also just to, um, to go over what our annual mileage is. You'll see a big dip that we had, of course, back in, uh, 19 and 20. Um, our year-end mileage has not been completed yet for the 21, 22 school year. Um, but you will see that we a- ended our yearly mileage, um, back in 21 with approximately 1.664, 1,664,670 miles for the total year. The next, uh, slide just basically breaks down, these are, um, pieces of mileage that our drivers, um, drive on a daily basis that we are considered ineligible. Some of those are shuttles, um, in between our work programs. Those are practices. Um, they are not counting in our eligible miles for transportation. The next slide, um, not something we like to talk about, but that does happen. Uh, we have had an increase of accidents. Um, this year we ended, I think, with a total of 25 total accidents. You'll see that our highest month was April. Um, the accidents, we also break those down into the types, which is the next slide, and our accidents by type, by the biggest percentage is our side swipes. Side swipes, rear ends, backing, those are our most significant amounts of accidents that we have within our Transportation Department. The next slide is our Transportation Department allowable costs. Uh, we have the data from 2012 all the way to 2021. We ended, uh, 21 in total allowable cost of 10,481,908. The next slide then shows you what our cost factor percentage efficiency rated, rating is. Um, we have data from 2012 all the way to 21. We ended 21 since we don't have data yet for 22, but we ended in 21 at 137% efficiency. The next slide is one of the other slides that we are quite proud of, so I'll end it with this one. Um, we do have 179 buses in our fleet. We had all of them inspected back in March. Um, we came out with a 98.4% approval rating, um, inspection rating, and that was two defects that were found and they were serviced. Um, our state average is, for this current year is 88.7%, but I also want to, um, to just point out how that was obtained with, uh, our mechanics. Some driving in the mornings, mostly driving every single afternoon in addition to the duties and the maintenance for these buses. This is pretty outstanding. We're pretty proud of that. And that concludes my presentation.
Any questions?
Yeah, President Bryce, bye. Kim, on the slide with, um, the number of staff, can, I know it's probably not off the top of your head, but could you give me rough order of magnitude? Like, what's our turnover rate in drivers, aides through a given year? Like, when we start with a year, 100 whatever drivers, what's the turnover rate generally been? And has that changed over the years at all?
I don't have a, a figure for as far as the turnover rate, but I will say this year was significant for us as far as the number of FMLA and medical leaves and absences. Um, we had quite a few that retired this year. We had a lot of veteran drivers that were reaching up into the time that they were going to retire, but I don't have a, a complete turnover rate.
President Bryce. Can you speak to, kind of to piggyback on that, just a little bit about how, um, kind of towards the end of the year, how well we did in like filling those positions, kind of where we ended the year and maybe some opportunities for next year to, to keep those positions filled so we can have those routes, um, moving along.
So that number of 126 drivers, that was, um, as of June the 6th, though those were the retirees and, um, the resignations that we received through June the 6th. Um, we actually probably ended more of our school year back on June the 2nd with 130 drivers. But again, we were covering anywhere from, um, 25 to 30 driver positions on a daily basis. Um, so going forward, we had a very successful, uh, Drive the Bus event last year, um, that, uh, brought quite a few drivers in for us and we had them trained over the summer. They were ready to go. We're planning for another Drive the Bus event next Friday, Saturday, so pass the word. Um, we also have, um, uh, created, uh, some business cards and some flyers that, um, throughout the year that we've gone to local businesses and passed them out and asked permission to set them out and display. So we really kind of reached out to the community, um, within this year, probably more aggressively in the past years, uh, to put the word out as far as that goes.
I had a question, please. Um, if you could just speak to, I mean, obviously, you know, parents, no one likes a late bus, right? And I know that, you know, sometimes I get a communication and, you know, it's just like, oh no, there, my, my kids are going to be late, you know, getting home from school or the bus is late getting them to school. What are some, I guess, things that the department is doing to try to improve the communication, the speed of that delivery of the communication to notify parents of those circumstances? Should they pop up?
Um, so, um, it is not our goal to have late buses, um, but, uh, our ultimate goal is to get the kids to school safely. So we have implemented an upgrade into our, uh, routing software. Uh, TransFinder Pro is what we previously were using. We're upgrading to TransFinder Plus. Um, this new upgraded into this, our system for routing has allowed, or is going to allow us to be able to route more efficiently, more quickly. Um, with that giving said, that we have a absence that comes in, we can quickly turn a route into a combined route, give that route to the driver, then there is no delay and there should not be, well, should not be, but we, we hope to not have any late buses. Um, so that is one thing. Um, the other thing is, is that, um, we're, we're taking some really close, um, look at how we communicate to the parents. Um, we are probably going to start a process to having one designated dispatch router that is their sole responsibility. When we do have the late buses, to send out the blackboard notifications. Um, but ultimately, you know, we will have some buses, traffic, whatever, but we're taking steps to be able to communicate more efficiently.
President Bryce, real quick, just one more question. So we've got in the, I think it was pulled, um, to approve the bus route, uh, for the upcoming school year. Can you just maybe speak to the process around setting that route? I know we've got now North Point Middle that was added to the routes. Um, just what goes into that assessment, how we best maximize the number of drivers needed and get to those kids?
Um, as far as, so we're adding our middle school for North Point. We are also making some adjustments for our routes that, um, are allowing our fifth and sixth graders to go back into the middle school, so that is some, uh, an adjustment. Um, we are also looking into, uh, triple tiering a lot of our bus routes, so they'll have the high school, middle school and on one tier and then an elementary and then a second elementary. So we're, we're trying to maximize the, um, needing less drivers by adding more routes and schools into an additional route.
Any more questions?
I have one. Was current vacancies on any of the slides?
I'm sorry.
Position vacancies for drivers? Was that on the slides?
No.
How many do you have currently?
Um, so currently we ended the year with approximately, um, 157 rout-, excuse me, 157 routes. And those included what we call driver floater positions. They are not necessarily assigned a route. Um, but we had approximately 129 drivers at the end of this school year, 130 drivers. So we had a probably about a 30, 30-driver shortage. We are actually experiencing a little bit more shortage with our aides at this time.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you. Up next, old business. We need a motion to approve the 2022-23 Board of Education meeting schedule as presented.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll take a vote. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Eyes have it. Next up, we need a motion to approve policy 0412 as presented.
I'd like to make a different motion, um, if that's okay with the board. I motion that we, uh, amend the policy for 12 as stated in here to remove in paragraph seven, the sentence that starts with however and ends in the applicable law, and then give guidance to the administration to update our procedurals around, um, our, our public forum.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, discussion?
Just to make it so it's really clear. Did you get that, Kathy? Just to make sure on the motion.
Just so I'm clear.
Yeah.
Um, your motion is to approve policy 0412 with, uh, an amendment to that. In item number seven, you would remove the sentence that begins with however, um, the bolded language and that ends with law. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then the rest of the policy would stand as is.
That's correct. And it includes approving the edit. That's, so it's as presented, which has got the edits that already deletes the last sentence in there.
I understand.
Makes sense? Okay.
I was going to ask, can you clarify what you mean by procedures?
Yeah, so I, I think, you know, there's policy and then there's procedures, meaning what is communicated out in, in terms of direction to public forum that's done by Dan. Um, and so I think there's, there's ways to, to steer those speakers because, look, I, I think that, um, the, this edit, I think, is appropriate, given the climate, given the concerns from a legal perspective that we, we've all been briefed there. Um, I think there's ways to, to, uh, implore speakers to, to navigate, um, speaking about staff or students in an appropriate manner. Um, recognizing, you know, you could potentially defame, um, an individual and, and find yourself in trouble. So I think how we describe that in our policy or procedure is important. Um, and so, you know, more getting to the procedural side than a, you know, pure policy that's trying to strike that language.
Any other discussion on this? Okay, hearing no other discussion?
Just real quick. And, and so I, I think we all recognize that, um, it's, what is it, SB 681? That, that was, that's going to get signed, I think, in August, speaks to, um, that by, I think, July of next year, so next school year, we'll need to get public, um, input into what our policy looks like, what our comment period looks like. And so I would expect potential changes to this down the road, given that need to do so under that new, um, bill.
Any other discussion? Okay. We have a motion and a second.
Can we get a roll call, please, Dan?
Yeah. Catherine, roll call, please.
Thank you. Uh, Director Lizak?
Aye.
Director Stoli?
Aye.
Director Scott?
Aye.
Vice President Goodson?
Aye.
President Bryce?
Aye.
Secretary Abbott?
Aye.
Director Bates?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next up, new business. We need a motion to approve the June 16, 2022 personal recommendation and resignation as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion?
I believe this was pulled from consent, was?
Just for a vote, I think.
Just for a separate vote?
Okay. Hearing no discussion, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Abstain.
And one abstain. Next up, we need a motion to approve local 6553 agreement as presented.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion?
Anything to add, Jennifer?
Sure. Um, so this is a three-year agreement and on the off years of the complete negotiation of the agreement, we discussed economic conditions and that's what we discussed and presented for you this evening.
Any other questions? All right, hearing no questions. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Eyes have it. Up next, we need a motion to approve the budget for 2022-2023 fiscal year as presented.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion?
Excuse me, President Bryce?
Yes.
I did not hear who motioned and seconded.
It was Betsy that motioned and was it Director, or was it Director Scott?
Discussion?
I think we got a presentation from Rick. We can't let that.
We do have a presentation. It, it's a sizable budget. There, there's a presentation for the, um, fiscal year 2023 budget, so, Mr. Angivine, Mrs. Dawson.
Yes, there's a presentation. As a matter of fact, uh, we are required to present this to the Board of Education. Uh, this particular budget, it, it is a large budget. It is over a quarter of a billion dollars. Uh, first thing I'd like to do is introduce Susan Dawson, our Finance Director, who put endless hours with her staff into the development of this budget and, and it's very much appreciated. And I believe it is a very good and a very strong budget. Uh, before I get into the budget itself, what I'd like to do i- is tell you where we plan to end this fiscal year. It's important to say where the fiscal year ends, uh, when presenting a budget because the dollars from this fiscal year are, are important on where we stand, uh, other, either positive or negative to this year's budget so we can determine the fund balances next year and the required fund balances, uh, that this board expects us to have. As far as fiscal year 21, 22, that's the year that we are currently in. We are expecting a surplus as we end this fiscal year. There's reasons for this surplus and number, the first reason is Prop C sales taxes. We never dreamed a year ago that the gross national product would be higher than it is this year and that more people would be spending more money. Uh, of course, prices are higher, but the fact of the matter is, sales taxes are up and we are, uh, favorable on sales taxes, which is what we call the Prop C sales tax, not to get confused with the Prop C bond that we've issued previously. Our federal breakfast and lunch programs have been very favorable in the fact that the government, the federal government, has been paying for breakfast and lunches. They're paying us more than we even charged for our breakfast and lunches. And, uh, since it's free, the kids are eating them and we're getting that, those extra revenues. Uh, that being the case, uh, unexpectedly, we also had, uh, a surplus in that area. Assess valuations, uh, house prices went up higher, uh, for new homes and homes that are being sold than we would have expected them to go up this year. And we are also experiencing vacancies. It's hard to find employment and as people are not employed, we've budgeted those people to be there when they're not there. Of course, we wind up with extra money in the budget for those items also. For those reasons, uh, we are having a, uh, a fiscal year surplus in the year 21, 22. One thing I want to state before I get deeply into the budget is that the budget's more than just a spending plan for the district. than just a spending plan for the district. And what I mean by that is every year we determine, and we do this back in November and December, we determine what our revenues are gonna be for the district. And it's only after we determine what our revenues are, or what our revenues are gonna be, that we can hit the priorities and decide and move toward the priorities of the district to fund those expenses. We had major priorities this year, and that's where our extra dollars went on our increased revenues. The largest areas being the staffing at North Point Middle School, of which we have not had to staff before, and new classes at North Point, a new class at North Point High School. Wages and benefits, it's always our intent to do whatever we can in the wage and benefit area, especially the wage area, and we have to know our revenues before we do that. So once we get our revenues in line, our priorities, staffing, wages, curriculum enhancement, we decided we wanted to do a technology audit this year. That is a priority. Again, we're prioritizing our dollars, and of course, in a totally different fund, not to be colluded with the other items above, are our capital funds. We have to prioritize our safety plans, maintenance, and construction. Our operating fund for next year, we are budgeting a surplus of a hundred seventy-four thousand dollars. This is just the operating fund. This is not any other, our budget consists of several funds. Our operating fund is what runs the district. Revenues at two hundred thirty-three point eight million with expenses at two hundred thirty-three point six million, with a surplus ending our operating budget for next year. As far as our capital fund budget, we are going to run an intentional deficit of four and a half million. When we receive money into the capital fund, that's normally when we sell bonds. For example, when we sold a hundred twenty-five million dollars of bonds many years ago, and we sold a hundred five million dollars of bonds in just two years ago. In those years, you will see an enormous amount of revenues come into here with very relatively low expenses. It's up to us, at that point in time, to keep spending deficits until this particular fund has completely spent the bond money. At this particular point, we are expecting to spend a deficit of four point five million dollars to draw down our bond money, which needs to eventually be drawn down by law to zero dollars. Our third fund is our debt service fund budget, with revenues of twenty-five million, expenses of twenty-five million with a hundred seventy-nine thousand dollar deficit. This is an intentional deficit as we issued two thousand twenty-one general obligation refunding bonds just this year. And when we issued those bonds, it was determined that we would pay down debt early. As we pay down debt early, we are running a deficit in this particular fund, as we still have a healthy fund balance here, and we're paying down debt early based on our general obligation refunding bonds. All funds total, we are going to run a deficit. Again, our operating funds are budgeted positive. The deficits are intentional. In this case, our deficit is to run down the capital funds until we have zero balance in that capital account. There always will be money in the capital account for things other than bonds, but until that bond money is spent, we will generally see deficits in the capital account. This particular screen you're looking at here, this particular chart, shows that fiscal year twenty-three, our operating fund balance is projected to be the largest in district history. We are going to have fifty-nine point two billion dollars projected at the end of two thousand twenty-three in our fund balance. Again, that is a record for this district. You can see in the year two twenty-twenty, the year twenty-twenty, that we dipped in our fund balance. The reason we dipped in our fund balance in that particular year, that was COVID. And during COVID, we ran into deficit intentionally to keep this district afloat. That's what our fund balance is here for. Since then, you can see that we've gradually building that back up, and we are at a record fund balance in our operating funds. That being said, there's a second side to that. This is our operating fund balance as a percentage of our expenditures. As this school district has been growing, the percent of our operating fund balance is lower than it has been in the last ten years. Again, the lowest percentage of operating expenses in the last ten years. Even though we're getting more of a fund balance, we are dipping to, at the end of twenty-three, planning to be at twenty-five point three-four percent. I've made a promise to this district and to this Board of Directors, and until I'm told otherwise, I am going to keep this balance at twenty-five percent above and do everything I can to moderate our expenses to stay at twenty-five percent. It was hard to do for next year's budget. We did it, and we will continue that in the future. Where does our money come from? Comes from two major sources. The blue portion of this pie chart is local sources. Local sources is assessed values, those are your taxes. Generally, property taxes and personal property taxes and real estate taxes. Our second largest, and the second largest source of revenue is the green part of this pie chart. These are state funds, and that is primarily our funding from our formula funds from DESI, from the state. Since assessed values are such a large part of our revenues, I do wanna highlight what's happening in our assessed values. Fiscal year twenty-three is not a reassessment year, which means your property values are not being reassessed, and we're not getting extra funds for your reassessed values in fiscal year twenty-three. Our assessed values are projected to be approximately two point six-eight billion dollars, which is a three point nine-five percent increase in assessed values. Tax rates are expected to remain stable despite the Hancock Amendment taxing limitations. The reasons for that is that it's a reassessment year. Excuse me, it's not a reassessment year, and because inflation is so high, the Hancock Amendment limits us going up to the amount of inflation of five percent. With the Consumer Price Index being so high, we will not have to lower our tax rates to be in compliance with that Hancock Amendment. Again, this is our largest source of revenue, and we are projecting a hundred thirty-four point seven million dollars in current and delinquent assessed values. As far as state formula funding, this is our largest funding source from the state. Our state formula funding is based on two main things. The first is called SAT, which is a state adequacy target, which is expected to remain stable at six thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars per student. Our enrollment is budgeted to be less than or equal to two thousand nineteen-twenty enrollment of seventeen thousand three hundred twenty-seven. Now, if you take that SAT rate times that enrollment, that's generally close to what we will get in formula funding. There are many adjustments, believe that many adjustments, you can't just multiply those two numbers, such as our free and reduced lunch programs, as well as how often our kids attend school. Those are all weights, along with many other factors that are going to determine our formula from the state, but it's basically based on SAT and enrollment. We're, we're, our budgeting that our formula funding will remain stable between twenty-two and twenty-three, and that's not normal for this district. This is normally a very growing district, but because the growth has not come in the last couple of years since COVID, there's many reasons for that. We hope that it does increase in the near future, but we're not budgeting it to, as again, being a conservative budget. Where are our funds spent? What funds do we spend that money? And you can see that this is all of our spending completely together. You can see that our general and teachers' fund, which is the blue and the red portions of this pie, our general and teachers' fund consists of eighty-three percent of our money goes to teachers and general funds. The general fund runs the district, and the teachers is our teachers' pay and benefits. If you'll notice that the capital projects fund is the green slice, which is seven point seven percent, that piece of our funding is what we build with, and that's what we buy capital with. The debt service fund at nine percent, nine point one percent. If I were gonna compare that to what that means in your personal budgets, that's what we pay for our buildings. It's like your house payment. We pay nine percent one of debt to pay for the buildings that we have, and that's the percentage that we have to, for this building and every other building in the district. Since our operating expenses is what runs this district, I want to let you know where our operating money goes. As you can see, eighty-four percent of our operating funds goes to salaries and benefits. Only sixteen percent of our operating funds go to anything other than salaries and benefits. Purchased services is seven percent. That includes tuition reimbursement to third parties, property services, professional services, legal and audit services, IT services, and it pays our insurance. Supplies, which is the purple part of this piece of pie, is nine percent. That nine percent covers utilities, all the utilities, all of our tech, technology supplies, food service, all of our food. Just those three items alone is fifty-four percent of our supply budget. The rest of that supply budget, which is about four and a half percent of our total budget, covers a slew of things with four and a half percent. Our last four and a half percent covers furniture, fixtures, small equipment, band instruments, music, sports, uniforms, classroom supplies, instructional supplies, camps, student activities, all of our health services, evaluation, testing, chemicals, waxes, paper, departmental supplies. You can see that eighty-four percent is salaries and benefits. The rest of it is split among that last sixteen percent and is running very thin in the district. As salaries and benefits is our largest source of expenses, I'd like to just briefly tell you about our salaries and benefits this year, or our budgeted year for twenty-three. Staffing has had to be increased to accommodate opening North Point Middle School and adding a class at North Point High School. New certified positions are twenty-three, and the new support staff positions are fourteen. Medical insurance benefits went up three percent. And vacancies, this is one thing I want to point out to the board and everybody here, is that vacancies have been accounted for in the fiscal year twenty-three budget. I think it's important that I explain what this is. Every year, as I just recently explained, we generally budget a negative balance in our funds. A negative balance, meaning we expect to run into deficit, and we budget a deficit. But we always seem to come out better than our budget. And the question is, why do we always come out better than we've budgeted? One of the reasons is we have never budgeted vacancies. What that is, is we always expect never to be one hundred percent staffed at any particular time. Where does that extra money go? It goes to the bottom line. What we did for the first time this year, and this does have a major effect on the budget, and I want everybody to be aware of this, is that we are budgeting the vacancies, which means that extra money that is normally there from open positions that we cannot fill at that particular point in time, we have budgeted that money in other places. That makes this budget a much more accurate budget, but at the same time, not only does it make this budget much more accurate, it means that there's not as much fluff in here either. And I want to make that very clear as we move into the next year, that we don't have this extra thing called vacancies to make up for a lot of other expenses, that we are going to be much tighter on expenses because we did budget vacancies and we budgeted a balanced budget this year. One thing about our capital funds, again, that's separate from operating funds, and these are the funds that I told you that we need to spend down to zero within a certain amount of time by law. We still have three or four years to spend down Prop C, our last prop that we issued a hundred five million dollars of bonds on. What I want to say about our construction and how these funds are being spent, the district has completed each of the last ten construction projects on time and under budget. The capital budget includes the cost to complete all promised Prop E and Prop C construction. We're planning on completing the promised items next year. The long-term construction and strategy team will determine the best uses of available funds from being favorable to that budget. We have a team, it includes board members, it includes about fifteen people, fifteen to twenty people, who are our strategy team that will determine the best use of those funds. Specific maintenance projects included in this capital budget are listed in the budget document, which was approved by you at a previous board meeting. We do have a long-term planning section included in the budget. The long-term planning section includes a five-year scenario, which is what we do for this district. The five-year scenario includes a prediction of where we're gonna end this year. This year's gonna end in about two weeks, and we have a projection for our fiscal year ending fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. Next year's budget is what you're approving tonight, what I hope you approve tonight. I'm not going to prejudge anything. And then we also have projections for the next three years, which is fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. Our long-term planning assumptions are included in the budget document, and I am very happy to say that our operating income is forecasted to remain favorable through our entire five-year plan. So we do look ahead, we do look ahead of schedule, and we do make sure that we're not on a trajectory where we should not be. General highlights of the budget, we have reduced the budget document by about fifty pages this year, and I hope the board appreciates that, and I hope anybody who reads this budget appreciates that. We've removed all duplicate information. We've got a condensed format with less pictures. It's reformatted to flow and read more easily, but we have absolutely removed no information from this budget. As a matter of fact, we have added information to this budget. We have added a monthly operating budget to this, which is a very difficult thing to do, because our software systems do not budget on a monthly basis. We created our own system. It downloads from our Sysfin system, which is our financial system, so now we can budget on a monthly basis. What does that mean to this board? What that means to this board is, in the future, starting in August two thousand twenty-two, let's face it, this year ends in June, we'll have our financials in July, and will be reported on in our August board meeting. In that board meeting, you will see a new monthly report that will compare actual to budget rather than year to year. I think it would be very, much easier for this board, that's the reason we're going this direction, I think it's much more plain for a person to understand. Not everybody can read year-over-year budgets and compare the years and say, are we doing, are we up on budget and are we not on budget? I think this is something that's been overdoing this district a long time. It's a major addition to this budget this year, and I think you'll much prefer looking at a financial report on a monthly basis that says, where are we over and under budget on every item monthly so that we can act, or so that you can act more quickly? I think it's one of the best things that we've done in this budget, and I'm looking forward to implementing that at the August board meeting. All being said, fiscal year, our summary of what I've just discussed, we are budgeting an operating surplus, which is a great thing. We're keeping our fund balances above twenty-five percent, which is, I believe, the minimum that we need to do. We have added staffing for North Point Middle School and North Point High School. The district construction is favorable to budget, and we have extra funds to do more things in the future. Our long-term projections are favorable, and we have great new monthly reporting process that we're going to be presenting to this board in the future. And to top it all off, this isn't made up. This is, these numbers have been approved by our auditors with no findings saying that the numbers we report and the way that we report our numbers is accurate and is believable, and it is the way it is, and it is the way that we say it is. And again, I appreciate Susan and the finance staff who runs this area. I believe they do a tremendous job, and I believe this is an area of the district that we should be very proud of. And I'm asking for approval of the budget, and at this particular time, I'd like to open it up for any questions from the board.
President Bryce, may I ask questions? What are you smiling for? It's more actually a comment. Rick, I would agree with many of your statements as you close there. I think you guys do a really good job with this document and then your work throughout the year with the departments. I certainly appreciate the ad of the monthly budget that allow this board to kind of see where fluctuations will continue throughout the year. I also, that first bullet, I think, is incredibly important. You know, us having a balanced budget to start the year and show that and demonstrate that to the community is also important. I think, if I recall, it's probably the first time in a while we've shown a budget to this board that's balanced in that way. This is more of a comment to peers as it relates to the excess in our construction and that strategy committee that we've had. We've had some conversations around that. The number is in this document that we're talking, in the budget document that we're talking about in excess. Through the work of, you know, Rick's team, John's team, the past boards, et cetera, the past construction projects have yielded a bond excess of thirty million dollars. And this district, this governing body, and those in the future that are on this governing body has a choice to make. You know, Rick is saying in here that if you just, you know, increase salaries by three percent, benefits by four percent, and assume kind of steady, you'll have a surplus against your operating. Keeps it right around twenty-four, twenty-five percent in terms of a surplus. But I think we all know, in terms of competitive nature to salaries, things that we have, you know, to consider in this, in this, you know, that people have expressed in terms of concerns that we should spend and focus money on, there are choices we will have. There are choices we will have to make. Now, recognizing that $30 million is bond money and sits in a fund specifically. But that doesn't mean there's create, there isn't creative ways to think about how that makes its way into an operating fund. And, and I think we should really focus over the coming year around what we're doing with that money and how we think about what we want as a district and as a governing body around our salaries, the competitive nature, the staffing structure that we have to help our kids and their students in this district the best way possible. To me, this is a testament, that money is a testament of the work that the district does to, to, to make it work. And so we should take the opportunity to think strategically, how we address other concerns that are floating around. We all ran on platforms, had things we wanted and were our priorities and things that we wanted to accomplish. I think this is an avenue that allows us to talk about those things and address those in various ways. Not saying I have the solutions or what my views are at that point, but I think that's what we have to focus on as we move forward. So again, Rick, appreciate the work that this team done. It was a much easier read with the 50 less pages, so appreciate that.
Any more discussion?
I just want to echo the great work again, and, and this is a little bit different approach that we've done in previous years. So I'm interested to see, you know, how it all plays out, but thank you for the hard work.
Okay, hearing no more discussion, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Motion passes. Next up, we need a motion to approve the teacher fund transfer as presented.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Next up, we need a motion to approve the capital projects fund transfer, food service as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Next up, we need a motion to approve the capital projects fund transfer, maintenance and renovation as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Your mic's on, Katie. No discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next up, we need a motion to approve the capital projects fund transfer, transportation as presented.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next up, we need a motion to approve the new and revised curriculum as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Shannon, I believe you pulled this.
Actually, I think it was me. Yeah, so I think there was multiple board members that had questions here. So I saw Dr. Skeeters, I'll just ask you just a couple more process questions around this one. So it's, you know, it's pretty clear what we were trying to accomplish with the movement of the sixth grade and other things that we're trying to address. Talk to us a little bit about the committee that set up the process to establish that. And I think more so as we think forward, because I think it was maybe three or four meetings ago, we talked about the, the desire to look at other curriculum and update that given, you know, the time since the last time we've done that. And so kind of just thinking forward on those things, how that, how you may see that process changing with the committee.
So I just want to be clear, when you speak about committee, you're talking about the curriculum review committee, not the curriculum, not the committee developing the curriculum, correct? Okay, just want to make sure. So we have had for several years, a curriculum review committee, they meet twice a year. To, during the fall meeting, we present to them what curriculum is being developed that year. And in the spring, they review that curriculum and there's an opportunity to provide feedback, ask questions. And then we take that feedback and make adjustments to make it easier to understand, to, typically, it's not usually changing content, it's usually about something that's easier to understand on the, like the, from the parent perspective. We recognize that there is a need to involve the community to a greater degree in conversations around teaching and learning. So the curriculum review committee, as it is currently, is actually now as it was, we are going to stop that process and begin a new process. We're in the process of outlining what that will look like. But what we intend is for that to meet more regularly, so two meetings a year is not really sufficient. And also those were not designed to provide feedback on, you know, a variety of things. So we're looking to, I would say, probably meet about four times a year. That might not be, you know, totally accurate yet. We haven't, like I said, totally outlined it. But probably about four times a year, we'll be bringing topics that we are considering to, to that, that committee, to that advisory group to get feedback as we move through curriculum development, looking at resources, considering, you know, different elements that impact instruction for our students in the district. So that, that is the plan. We plan to have that wrapped up as far as planning what that looks like by August so that sometime before around school starting, we will share that information with the community so that they can let us know if they'd like to be involved.
Appreciate the comment. I, I would welcome, you know, a chance to have more involvement from the community in this process, so appreciate that.
Dr. Skeeters, if I may, for, for those that may not know, again, it's kind of the process of how you guys landed, how your department landed on this recommendation, can you just provide some insight? I know you have it in the packet, but for those who didn't read, you know, the recommendation in full, can you just speak to that a little bit?
Regarding the curriculum we selected?
Yeah, just, yeah, if you could just provide some background.
So we, we have sixth graders returning to middle school. Everyone is incredibly excited about that. When sixth grade moved from middle school to elementary school, we were able to, we had a little bit of space and time in the middle school schedule for seventh and eighth graders, we were able to add an additional elective, which is incredibly important, given the fact that prior to that, students were making really tough choices between things like year-long electives like band and choir, and they could maybe only choose that and nothing else. So this provided us the opportunity to expand students' opportunities to engage in a variety of, of opportunities to learn different content. When we're, now we're moving sixth grade back, we're looking to provide those sixth grade students with something very similar. So this expands the offerings for sixth grades. In addition, in alignment with our CSIP goals, we are working to expand opportunities in career tech ed areas and to ensure that we have created clear career paths or clear, clear opportunities for students to engage in learning in particular career paths. And so the changes that we've made to middle school electives allow for students to do some exploratory learning in the career paths that we have identified that align directly to classes in the high school. So they have some time in middle school to try some of those things out, see what they might like, and then they'll be ready for course selection going into high school.
Any more discussion? Okay, thank you. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes. Okay, next up, we need a motion to approve the 2021, 2022 final routes as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion?
Actually, had this item pulled, or President Bryce. A lot of the questions that I had were addressed in the transportation presentation. I just want to use this opportunity to just encourage, you know, obviously, we have a lot of openings. So anything that anybody can do to spread the word and encourage that, because we all want our students to get the bus service that they need. But also kind of use this as an opportunity, you know, that the transportation department recognizes the importance of keeping the community up to date on where they stand on, on filling those positions.
Shannon and I drove the bus last year, so it's fun, you should come out and drive it. I promise it's a good time.
Any more discussion? Hearing no discussion, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes. Next up, we need a motion to approve the bills for payment as presented.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in a second.
It's just for a separate vote.
Okay, any other discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Abstain.
It was too good of saying.
Director Stoli and Director Abbott.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, I think Curtis had something to say.
I do. This will be the last face-to-face meeting for Dr. Hector and for Mr. Schulte. So Jen, for your four very furious years in this district, there's been a great deal of work that's, that's occurred in the HR department. And you've done an amazing job and wish you all the best in the future. And to Mr. Schulte, for 19 years, if I remember correctly, in the Wentzville School District. Many years at Boone Trail, but you've done an amazing job in your role in administrative services. And so this district will move forward, but please know that not only do I professionally, but I personally wish you both all nothing but the best and you respect the futures. Thank you for your work here in Wentzville.
And I think we would also like to echo that as a board, we really appreciate working with you guys. We appreciate everything you've done. And Curtis is also, Dr. Kane, you're also on your way out. And I, the board would like to say thank you for all your hard work. I know it's, we've, it's been, it's been a fun two years, very interesting and one hell of a ride. So we appreciate it and we look forward to your success in Rockwood.
Dr. Kane, when you started, there were 14,063 students. And now there's over 17,400 students. You added six buildings in that nine years, as well as 1.4 million square feet to this district. And I appreciate that work because that's not easy. I think Aaron can attest, boundary changes and other things are not an easy thing to do. And it takes a lot of work from this collective group, the community, to do those things and it's appreciated.
Okay, next up, we need a motion to adjourn, open session and go back into closed session for the purpose of personnel and student matters.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.